In your packets for today, are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? Okay, I have one, so let's go to page four. Sorry to do it to you guys, but halfway down, Chair Hartsell stated she agrees with some of Mr. Miller's comments and she visited there. That is, that's fine, I have no problem with that. This next sentence needs to be revised, I believe. I would be, it is, it does not appear that Electric Message Board, a commercial building in the north, it was Dr. Flood's building, I named it. There's no reason you can't quote me on that, because that identifies. But I didn't say it didn't appear, I questioned. I questioned whether that sign was operating in accordance with any restrictions that may have been placed upon it when it was granted. And I made it clear to say I didn't know that, but I wondered, truthfully wondered if maybe it was, if we had put any restrictions on and were they in violation of those restrictions? So that needs to, it was not a flat-out accusation that they were not, but I did raise the question. I certainly questioned whether they were and asked whether or not staff could look into whether or not should we have placed any restrictions on that sign. So you can something to the effect of, she questioned whether the electronic message board on Dr. Flood's building is operating in accordance with any imposed restrictions on that permit, something along those lines. I would be satisfied with that. I think that's a more accurate. And I don't mind if you name the building. There's no, I mean, I said it in the public meeting, I have no problem with that. That's the sign, so. Anybody, anybody remember it differently that was here? And with noting for the record, Ms. Burzak joins us as well. That would be my only request. Anyone have any objection to that modification? Other questions or comments or clarifications on the minutes? Well. Any additions or corrections to the minutes, Ms. Burzak? All right, with that addition done, all those in favor of adopting the minutes proposed and amended here today signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Minutes are adopted as amended. All right, next item on the agenda is a sign request pertaining to One Lighthouse Lane, the St. Joe River Yacht Club, special approval of a sign greater than 32 square feet. For the record, and officially, there are three members of this, well, there are four actually, but three members present here today. Four members of the yacht club, including one who was on the board, and we do have a quorum with Ms. Burzak joining us, that we think it's highest and best practice, counsel correct when I wrong, that those members should refuse themselves on this vote pertaining to the yacht club. That would be, I believe, Mr. Teff, Mr. Miller, and Mr. York, who is a board member. I understand counsel, or counsel, these gentlemen are going to recuse. Mr. York, you're on the board, is that my understanding?
That is correct.
Mr. Teffs, you're a member?
That's correct.
And Mr. Miller, you're a member as well?
Correct.
Okay. And so with that, if you gentlemen want to step out for a moment, we'll address this. I'm not sure where. Sometimes the, there's rooms and places over there. As they leave the meeting, we can address this agenda item. Is there somebody here to speak to this proposal? If you'd like to, somebody come up to the podium, please, because we need you on a microphone. If you would, please come up and introduce yourselves, tell us who you are, what you are requesting here today. And I would tell you, gentlemen, that we have been provided with your application a week in advance, so we've all had a chance to look at it. But tell us who you are and what you're asking for today.
Sure. Hi, I'm Doyle Rogers. I'm from Art Effects Sign Company in Bridgeman. And I'm working for our client, St. Joseph River Yacht Club, joined by Bob Walk.
I'm Bob Walk, commander of the St. Joseph River Yacht Club.
Welcome. You are asking for a variance under our sign ordinance briefly, what is it you're, just in general, what are you asking for?
Sure. Okay, so I understand anything over 32 square foot when it comes to any type of sign in the city of St. Joe requires this kind of approval. And the building that we're installing signage on, which most of you are probably already familiar with, the building, it's a rather large building. We're putting letters, we're proposing to put letters on the building made out of stainless steel. And there are about 45, 43 and a half square feet total. So it's a little larger than your 32 square foot, but we feel like it's actually a pretty good fit for the size of the building and from where it's going to be viewed. And, you know, it's a little more useful being legible from a little bit further away. And it also kind of fits the aesthetic of the building.
Is there any signage there currently?
There is, there is.
Is that, is something being removed and replaced by this?
If you look in one of the photos, you'll see the existing sign, it's freestanding in front of the building.
I don't have a picture of a freestanding sign in our packet, I'm sorry. Kristen, that was the understanding, there's a freestanding sign?
Package page 12. Top photo.
Oh, that, that is being removed?
That's correct. That was the sign existing when it was the blue pub and we adapted it for use.
Questions for our applicants?
The only other sign that was on, on, that I see?
Right.
And that will remain?
That will remain.
Other questions for? Thank you.
Okay. If I may add one thing. It is a dead-end street, so you're not getting a lot of through traffic. And the only visibility is with it would be from the West Basin and a little bit from the street, but it's not pounding you in the face, let's put it that way.
Thank you.
From the parking lot, maybe staying on water?
From the, from the water, but there's a wall that's there, so really, the only place you'll see it is if you're coming in the driveway before the wall starts.
Okay. Remind me, are these backlit? These aren't lit?
No.
And there would be perhaps some minor visibility from some of the residents immediately up from your parking lot? Possibly at some angles.
Could be, yeah.
All right, thank you. All right. Ladies and gentlemen, any discussion? Ms. Burzak?
So I feel in relation to the height of the building, that what is being posed is very appropriate. Very happy to see that reads our channel limits and not letters on a big sign pipe, which we often get, because obviously this is more costly to install and every other way than that. But this is way more attractive, and so I appreciate the sense of, you know, the scale and that you're trying to be the neighbor. And I have no objection to what I'm seeing here, and I think that we can study with everything.
Thank, thank you. Any other comments? Ladies and gentlemen, what is your pleasure? Do we have a motion? I should, well, I should know, first of all, public hearing is not required, but it is a public meeting. Is there anyone here that would like to speak to this proposal? Kind of figured not, because there weren't too many people in the room, but I want to be sure and ask, we always take public comment. Kristen, did you receive any public comment into City Hall? Okay. All right, then, ladies and gentlemen, what is your pleasure? Do we have a motion, Ms. Burzak?
Yes, move to approve a request by Art FX LLC on behalf of the property owner, St. Joseph River Yacht Club, for the property located at One Lighthouse Lane, that's what the volume sign, greater than 32 square feet. 47.25, is that the actual size? Because it was different somewhere else, 40. Okay, so just to clarify, for the actual size of one non-illuminated wall sign on the north side of the building, based on the drawings prepared by Art FS LLC and included in the May 1st, 2025 Planning Commission Packet, as the requests meet the factors as filed in section 25 F33, 1B at the side of the elements as stated in the finding.
All right, thank you. I have a motion by Ms. Burzak. Do I have support for her motion?
Support.
Ms. Porter beat you by an eyelash, I'm sorry. All right, I have a motion, support for the motion. Is there additional discussion on the motion? Clerk, may I call the roll?
Yes. Sir, Ms. Porter?
Yes.
Mr. Plaka?
Yes.
Chair Hartsell?
Yes. It's a good-looking, good-looking sign, gentlemen. Thank you. If you could bring our folks back, we'll continue with the next item on the agenda. That had been the blue sign? All right. Welcome back, gentlemen. Next item on the agenda is a public hearing with regard to text amendments to Section 18.26, 1827C, in Table 18-1, Parking Standards of the Zoning Ordinance. As it relates to required parking, we have our recused members as to the yacht club have returned us, so we are at full strength here. I'm going to open the public hearing. And as you know, mail to you was a lot of months of work. And we've got a couple of things handed to us today. I, I'm not sure I, when I raised a question directly to Kristen and Lori, I'm not sure I necessarily meant that you had to replace, I had a question. My only question for me, I'll just start the ball, we'll come back to everybody else, was on packet page 55, under Planned Unit Developments, I'm working, I can't work from the red text. I'm sorry, I'm on, I'm on the actual text where you can see with no lines. I just wondered whether or not in an ordinance that we're passing, when you say parking standards will be established by the planning commission after receiving the recommendation of the administrator, et cetera, if that was sufficient to go, if that's, if that was appropriate to go in an ordinance in that form or fashion, it was more of a question for me, because it's, you know, it, there's not much there in terms of what do you do for a planned unit development? But the response and counsel came up with a possible statement to add, or I guess in this location as well. And I'm reading this from, from your proposal on email, and I, and is it all right to, that's not confidential, I'm just something along like this, and this may not be an improvement, this may be, you all, maybe you guys have no problem with it as it is. Parking regulations for planned unit developments are established by the planning commission after receiving the recommendation of the zoning administrator based on the mix of proposed uses or most similar uses as further described in Article 13. So I don't know, counsel, which, recommendation either way, that to replace what's currently on packet page 55? In addition to, or?
No, I think the proposal that was initially prepared was to take that out of the chart that's there because the PB regulations would apply. I think my concern was we're moving it altogether from this chapter is what, it was to make sure that if people are looking for parking, if it's more of a PB, they know where to look. If you see parking as the chapter that's particularly for somebody, maybe looking. When we go back to chapter 13, even PB regulations, to figure it out, I think something in parking section needs to address that, so we have a cross talk.
Great.
Part of the concerns we get sometimes is that it's hard to find things, or if it's in a different section, people won't help it, and it's not there, so it's difficult to talk to there. But I think Kristen removed it from the chart because it's compared to how based on new studies, and so it's not one of the priorities.
Okay, the chart you're referring to versus what I'm looking at on packet page 55? One of the same, something different? What are we doing about packet page 55, if anything?
That table. It is 45 to 55, so I could completely say where we need to reduce. It's a very narrow area, I did not track, helping to do the parking. And so I could easily look and say, okay, senior residential, we need to do this. So if you go back.
Okay, so which text are we actually voting on then tonight, if, what pages are we actually voting on? Because this is the first public hearing on the new proposed ordinance. And I obviously.
Page 41.
Right.
41 to?
55.
44, is the two person of this and that are proposed. Pages 4, go off and write a copy?
Yes. Okay, so the only thing that will actually be voted upon if, assuming there are additional, is pages 41 to 44. Is that what I'm understanding? Okay, Ms. Burzak?
So, the first page of was a PB. Don't you have to meet the requirements for the PB for each listing, so you have a hotel, you have, you know, you have dwelling units, don't you have to meet the criteria for a PB or evidence associated with, within that PB? So when it's just easier to say, PB, touching the requirements to meet the same standards as the original use. So for instance, if you have a hotel, you look up what the hotel is, you need that use. If you have R3, you look up R3, you use that use. That's how I always thought it had been in the past, so it seems like having that in the table that says that it follows the used original use within this PB would be adequate, and then they would further vote to just make the exception to that third.
But your existing language doesn't say that. It just says shall be recommended. So, and it was only more than just, you know, at least, and you can ask for waivers to require what, require chart if you wanted to, or if you would follow the rules, so what? When we did that storage place around the island, staff recommended a different location other than storage, because ways to different second to be used. And it's working, it's working well. But I think from a standpoint of a starting point, to help us try and figure out how much parking they have, a PB, anything can be requested as waiver, that's part of the video of PB. But I think to have at a very minimum that these are, you know, so can we use the parking pad for, you know, if it was in the original use? So if it doesn't tell me to follow that, if it's the, um, outdoor, whatever. So I think it would be good to tie in there, but as all these different PBs and things, it's all set. Just eliminating it completely from the table, like if that's what it seems, on packet page 44, it's eliminated, probably seen it all. So they will, with that, more.
So I ended up two different things, one was a red line, back to the front.
It's here. Put it in front.
We took that, you want to keep that one, if you think the landing notes that existing in table 18, and so it has to begin before the beginning of the table for 18.
Mm-hmm.
Which also refers you to the PB ordinance. Article.
But I think it's what you're saying with the language, it's a free space out, everything is covered, so it's that depends after we see, in terms of the, 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 thinking that start out, the state market regulations, so I knew it's all, and so these are both, the more you can add further extraction.
Yeah, because you can always ask for a waiver, but when, you know, typically, someone is looking for an idea of how many parking spaces they need, because that's part of what their costs associated with developing a parcel is. And so to have nothing to go by, they have no idea what the planning commission or the zoning administrator is going to recommend. I, I think that's just kind of not helping someone to understand what they might need to provide. So if they know that for a hotel, it's X number of spaces, at a minimum, they know that they can always ask for a variance, but they should at least be looking for getting a starting point, yes. And so to have nothing, I don't feel, is serving a developer trying to understand what they might be required to do. Does that make sense? Well, Lori just said what she would be having, yeah. Yeah, I think how she worded it, in my opinion, is understandable, and would, you know, would then give a developer, or someone else working on a plan, a starting point.
Thank you. Any comments about the areas we touched on at the last meeting that they came back with proposed language on? The outdoor dining, anybody having an issue with the way that was addressed? Struck me with a pretty reasonable compromise, but that was, I wanted to hit on the, the couple of things that came up the last meeting to be addressed before we voted or went further today. We had that, and we had the auditoriums. That was explained in the packet. Anybody have any questions or follow-up for staff on that? Okay.
What page was the outdoor dining on?
It was in the staff materials, I don't know. I'm looking at the first page of our staff materials, which was 21. Anybody else have any comments or thoughts or questions or? Kristen, we have any, obviously, we don't have anybody, well, we have a guest, but we don't have anybody here that appears to be raising their hand to speak for our public hearing, but did we have any comment, any input from any source outside? Close the public hearing. Ladies and gentlemen, much pressure. Lot of work here. What is, go right ahead.
At page 24, I was trying to figure out, at first I thought it was in section 1 and 4, but then the recommendation is 1 and 6, placing which is showing the 1, 4 was correct. That wasn't 1 and 4 with entirely, and then the agreement is that more than 6 is a better, okay. Even how long it is, I think it wanted, okay. But I thought, but I, okay. Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, further comments, discussion, or do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Mr. Ebert?
Move to recommend approval of the proposed amendment to Article, oh goodness, 18, Off-Street Parking and Loading.
You don't speak Latin?
Oof, it's been a while. Section 18.2.6, Measurement and Calculations to Define Square Feet Non-Durable Good and Durable Goods, and to Modify the Definition of Seating Capacity and Section 18.2.7. C, Table 18-1, Parking Standards to Modify Use Categories to Correspond with the Use Classes in Table 4-1, Standardized Parking Formulas, and Reduce Some Parking Requirements for the Zoning Ordinance of the City of St. Joseph, Based on the Factors Set forth under Section 22.3 of the Zoning Ordinance, and as modified by today's discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Ebert. I have a motion. Do I have support for his motion? Mr. York supports the motion. Thank you, sir. Is there any further discussion on the motion? Hearing seen, none. Clerk may call the roll.
Mr. Ebert?
Yes.
No.
Yes.
Your honor?
Yes.
Mr. Plaka?
Yes.
Your porter?
Yes.
Mr. Plaka?
Yes.
Chair Hartsell?
Yes.
Ms. Burzak? Yes.
All right. Well done, ladies and gentlemen. That's a lot of work. We appreciate it. All right, next item on the agenda, organizational meeting. We need to appoint a nominating committee. Do I have any volunteers to serve on the committee?
What, I got reappointed?
Yeah, as you're, yes, you did.
How do you like that?
I wasn't asked. Just kidding. All right, we'll do it, we'll do, my dad used to always say, we'll do the army kind of volunteers. Mr. Teffs, may I ask you to chair the nominating committee? Thank you, sir. Ms. Porter, would you assist him?
Absolutely.
Thank you. Ms. Burzak, would you assist them as well? Thank you. And let's, in the category of can we really nitpick if you're really a detailed person, yes, we can. I think, just to clarify, on the 2022 nominee committee, Mr. Gresson and Mr. York, I'm sure that's probably correct, but I know as sure as I'm sitting here, there was a third person, because I always appoint three to break a tie. So I'm not sure, somebody else served in 2022. I didn't want anyone to think that we didn't, we didn't follow that rule. We always follow that.
Was that Kaylee?
Might have been Kaylee.
Yeah.
Might have been Kaylee, Whipper. Yeah, that might well have been. Wow, that's good.
Good job.
I had no idea who, but I knew there was a third. Thank you. Yep, yep. All right, then the next and last item on the agenda, old business. Do we have any other old business to come back to? Anything coming our, look our way, what do we know about June?
That one is, because a meeting has been fought. I haven't heard of anything. I know there's, like, map of anything that's going around out there for Upton as part of a, if you're, project.
Upton Drive?
Upton Drive, south, right where Whitlam Dead End is, on the west side of, of, of the property zone industrial, right now. No, one of these, as part of this overall development value.
Okay, but nothing else on the horizon? What about long-term slash short-term, or any in-between term projects we have sort of been given? I don't know that we have any directed to us at this moment by the city commission, don't give me any ideas. But there are some that we've had on sort of the back burner, childcare comes to mind. Where are we at on some of those?
Pretty busy, one bit, sorry. So hopefully, I can get something for them to do.
Okay. All right. Other? Old business, new business, or anything for staff, ladies and gentlemen?
I won't be here for the June meeting.
Well, then we can't meet, can we?
You certainly may.
All right, duly noted then, yes.
So the text amendment for mechanical equipment pockets of last time when we met, we see, we should have discussed it, referred it to staff to look with thoughts for?
Put them in the front yard. They want them in the front yard. What'd they, what did they end up doing?
So we ended up just going along with the regulations that were established for stairs. And we have the protection of stairs, stairs and lanes in the front yard that we did print back in 2022. So like in the R1, C, D, and E, and R2 district, it could be one foot off the lot line. And then in A and B is, we have to put 10 feet off the lot.
So you can put your air conditioning unit in your front yard?
And you could replacement one. Well, so replacement only should go back where it was. It shouldn't be one foot off the lot. Well, you know, some of them get bigger. So to address that, that was really the only way to.
I think that was intent all along.
No, that was discussed Monday night, and that had little discussion.
So it passed?
For the first, that was the first reading, so the second reading will be later on.
And was that unanimous?
Yes.
Can you tell me, is there somewhere in the city where it's one foot off the lot line currently?
I think if you, I think if you walk around, you can see, C, D, and E, you might find some.
Where's C, D, and E?
E, E is State Street, below the block. C, there's some, C is a odd district, because I think stories is C. But on the east side of Naz Avenue, there's some very small parcels just after the lowest, Niles Avenue, where it's split off with Richard Drive. There's some very small parcels that are, you know, there's stuff in.
So before, they were mentioning wanting screening. How do you screen something that's one foot off the lot line?
Screening was not included in the draft.
Any other news from the city commission or anything else, other projects out there we can, now we got parking under our belt, we can come back to? Ladies and gentlemen, anything else for staff? If not, do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you, Ms. Burzak. Do I have support for that motion?
Support.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Any discussion on that motion? All those, yeah, they wouldn't dare, would they? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. We are adjourned. We will see you in June. We are out at five on this.